Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 19th Board of Selectment meeting. My name is John Arena. This is our third in a series of budget meetings in the month of December. The last will be tomorrow night. These meetings are being conducted in part to provide greater transparency and background for those interested in what elements make up our town and school budgets and what that means in terms of next year's spending. Tonight's discussion will surround the subject matter of capital and debt. Specifically, facilities, performance contracting results, discussion on Killam School building project, a discussion on RMHS athletic capital projects, benefits, and other miscellaneous discussions. With that, I will turn to my right for Selectmen Liaisons reports. And Andy?
Just one, John. I spoke with the Chair of the Climate Advisory Committee, and I believe, if I recall correctly, they're due to sunset this month. Is that correct?
No, I don't think so.
No, did we extend it till next year?
We extended them two years.
I'm not sure. As soon as it would be, I think it was next year.
Okay.
So they don't note.
It should be on the website.
I'll check. I'll follow up.
Yeah, it's in our minutes also.
All right, thanks.
Barry?
A couple of things, Mr. Chair. Thursday night, I attended the Trust Fund Commissioners Meeting, and I'm actually pleased to report that at that meeting, the Trust Fund has agreed to fund RACASA's Interface Program to the tune of $4,000. This will allow that program to continue another year. For those of you who recall when Erica McAmara came in last week to talk about some of the work that RACASA is doing, one of the programs that they've funded through William James University is called the Interface Program, which basically it allows folks who are dealing with any kind of social, emotional, psychiatric, it doesn't have to be necessarily opioids, to basically access a call line, talk to a certified clinician who will then organize, through the person's insurance, different folks that will take their insurance and get them an appointment right away. Otherwise, most of the folks who have ever had to wait on hold a million times to access to see if your doctor will take it to get an appointment, these folks already kind of do that work for you. So it allows people to get in a lot quicker, and as you know, a lot of these issues are very, very time sensitive. So to date, Erica reported to the Trust Fund, and she reported here, that there have been 60 families that have been actually accessed that program with tremendous success. So we were able to fund that program now for another year. Going forward, as you also know, Erica talked about really their grants running out, so the ability to kind of piece together other sort of funding sources is really critical. The part about the Trust Fund which makes it a little tricky is that, as you also know, through the Trust, through the Hospital Trust Fund, they really need to be able to demonstrate that they are working with needy people. That program doesn't necessarily, doesn't means test, so it's really difficult to kind of see, you know, what percentage of people are, who are accessing the program, are actually lower moderate income. So that's something that Erica is going to try to work on to see if they can gather that information on the intake. But, you know, the Trust Fund does a use of sources for some of those things is, while it's a great source, it's not necessarily going to be a be all end all because of the fact that they do have that low income kind of provision. But we're good for another year. We'll figure it out next year. That's all.
Thank you, Barry. Dan?
I'll just announce this, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Board and the School Committee. Meeting jointly with the remaining members of the School Committee, the Selectmen and School Committee members unanimously appointed Sherry Van den Acker to fill the vacant seat vacated by Gary Nye on the School Committee through April 3rd, 2018.
Thank you, Dan. John?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, John. Any public comment before we move on? Okay. Bob, any opening comments?
Just to that last point, Bob, my charter, Sherry, in order to accept the School Committee appointment must resign as library trustee.
If we have nothing to do that.
Once she does, we need to advertise for a library trustee and go through a similar process. The trustees and the selectmen will sit jointly to appoint someone. I don't remember that happening in quite some time, but I did correspond with Amy today, and they're highly aware of that, and they're drumming up some interest.
Good, good. Thank you.
And they do want to fill the seat before the election?
Yes.
Good. With that, we'll turn the discussion to the FY19 Budget Review and the subject of facilities. Joe?
If I could just introduce how we're going to do tonight. Joe Huggins is our Facilities Director. Kevin Cabuzzi, our Assistant Facilities Director, are going to discuss the facilities budget. That's clean enough. Then Superintendent Doherty and myself are going to cover shared costs, things that are split between the town and the schools. And John is particularly going to focus and give some information out on Killam that he's previously given to the School Committee.
Joe?
Thank you, Bob. Hello, everybody. Tonight, we're going to go through the FY19 facilities budget. First slide here up on the screen will give you a look at our request for FY19 for the town facilities budget. We're looking at an overall increase of 7.35% and 0.82% increase in the core facilities. Town facilities is the budget for the custodians on the town side, as well as the cleaning contracts and the custodial staff that does cleaning of the town buildings. The next group down from that is the salary lines, which for the town facilities budget is a 5.1% increase and a 5.1% increase on the core facilities, and that is largely made up of step increases and collective bargaining, which is built into that. Below that, the expense lines for the town facilities budget is up 13.61%. That is due to a contractual obligation for contract cleaning for the town buildings. We entered into a new, with a new contractor halfway through last year, and this represents a full year of cleaning under the new contract, and we're having great success with that company. On the core facilities expenses, they're down 0.15%. I'll explain as we go further into that. There were some one-time expenses in our budget to do some project work this year in the town buildings, and there was, that came out of the budget. As far as our full-time employees of the facilities department, in the core facilities department, which is made up of four tradespeople and three office staff, that is the same this year request as last year, seven total employees. And on the town facilities, which is made up of four custodial staff that do clean the town buildings along with outside contractors, it's unchanged for FY19. So no additional. This next slide here just shows, everybody, what the breakdown in square footage is that we maintain. There's 17 buildings, just under 1.1 million square feet of space. Just to give you an idea, there's around 85% of the square footage lives on the school side and 15% on the town side. Cleaning of all the buildings, it does mention that cleaning of the buildings is accomplished with school custodians on the school side. We manage a staff that falls under the school facilities budget, which is, we're not discussing that tonight. We do manage a staff of 18 school custodians that clean the school buildings, and the maintenance staff, the core maintenance staff travels throughout all the town and school buildings and maintains all the buildings in town of Redding.
If I were correct on the cemetery bill, it's 1924.
1924, okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
We got it. We didn't know what we did. Who else?
Thank you. This next slide just talks about our department mission, and our main focus in the facilities department is to support the town with, you know, the educating of the students, as well as to support the municipal functions of the town of Redding by maintaining clean and safe buildings for the town of Redding. And that includes maintaining the capital plan, executing the capital plan, doing work orders, day-to-day work orders that are in all the buildings, as well as our preventive maintenance program, which I'm going to get into deeper as we go further. This is a quick look at our organization chart. Again, we, myself, we have the Assistant Director. He handles all the maintenance of all the town and all the school buildings, technicians out back and outside contractors, facilities manager, who we work, is a school department employee who works with and runs all the school custodians, and a rentals coordinator that is a school department position, but I thought we should mention that. It's in our office that does all the rentals for the town, for the schools, I should say. I know last year, we talked a lot about this. This is just a flow chart on the different technology we use. We've added a few different modules this year. We heavily use technology to run our department through energy management, work orders. Everything is on a program that enables users to log in and request work to be done in the buildings. It also has a preventive maintenance module that we use heavily to maintain all of our buildings, utility tracking software, which I'm going to get into also, facility scheduling automation, which we've launched in the last two years, that actually, when our rentals person puts a rental in, it'll actually occupy the space so that we optimize start and stop times in all of our buildings. And we also employ something called critical alarm automation that will also alert us if there's any kind of boiler failure, low temperature in a building, which is critical this time of year. We monitor the, you know, the PD, any of the data center, things like that, to make sure that things are running the way they should be. This just gives you an idea of some of the information we can generate from our work order in our preventive maintenance program, and this is utilities right here. This gives you an idea, water and sewer usage in gallons by square foot. If you look across the chart and you go down to the end, you look at, you can see Coolidge, Wood End, Senior Center, and Town Hall. Coolidge and Wood End are higher cost because those two buildings have irrigation, that we provide irrigation for, so they are higher. The Senior Center this past year has been getting used even more and more. I'm sure you've been hearing that. We do a lot of rentals over there, and that building is in full swing, as well as the Town Hall. If you look at the schools, you're going to see that it's pretty consistent across the board on the water and sewer charges, the water and sewer usage, I should say, by square This next slide right here talks about, speaks to electricity usage in our buildings. And if you look at like the Redding Police Department, again, this past year, you see there's, there was a lot of activity over at that building. The towns, a lot of the town's infrastructure lives over there, Town Hall, a lot of meetings going on over there. But this gives you an idea where kilowatt hour use per square foot at the different locations. And again, the schools, if you look at the use, overall, it's pretty flat as far as what we're using because we heavily employ the energy management in all the buildings, run times and things like that.
Is there more air conditioning afoot at the Senior Center, Town Hall, and Police Department?
The Police Department is fully air conditioned, and the Senior Center is also.
That would explain.
And Town Hall, yeah. This next slide is in thermes for natural gas, and if you look down, you can see the DPW garage for FY17 was pretty high usage. And speaking with the DPW folks, we had 25 sanding and salting operations over there, seven snowstorms, and not to mention all the daytime activity that goes on with them just operating the DPW during the normal winter. So that's why you're seeing that spike, and it'll, I'll speak more to that as we go further through the report.
Joe, why would the West Side Fire Station have such high uses compared to the Main Streets, but smaller?
Per square foot.
This isn't used. This is used normalized per square foot.
It's just a little, it's...
Is it just less efficient?
It's an older building. It's an older building. That could be part of it.
It's interesting. Look at the library, brand-new construction. Now, maybe that's only part of the year that you've got measured, but on a normalized basis...
Just so you know, the library, it flip-flopped. Right now, we only have a, how many BTUs is the boiler here?
1 million.
1 million BTUs. We used to heat the whole building with natural gas. Now it's the other way around. The electricity consumption is higher.
Higher than the heating.
So at town meeting, we were, this is kind of confusing. I'm not going to bore you with all the details.
Yeah, my eyes are way too old for that.
Your eyes will roll back in your head if I keep talking. The, I was asked the question about what we did for our performance contract initiative back in 2009, and this chart shows the different energy conservation measures that we did at each location. If you go across the top, you can see the conservation measure, where it was employed, and then what location it was employed at. This project pulled off, Bob, you can correct me, it was probably around $3 million worth of capital off the capital plan with everything we did. I thought it was five.
I think it was more.
It was a $5 million project, but it was, I think, it was quite a bit of capital that came off, which you'll see we're kind of light, we're light on the amount of capital in the mechanical work we're doing now. There's a few things coming up because we did it all under this project. You know, buildings that really benefited from this, one of them would be like the Joshua Eaton Elementary School, the, well, actually, I'm sorry, the Birch Meadow. The Birch Meadow got brand-new condensing boilers over there, which is huge. That's a huge energy savings over there, new air equipment. We did new unit ventilators. We did, that was a steam to hot water conversion we got done under this project. Everybody got lighting improvements, lighting controls, domestic hot water.
Energy management.
Energy management across the board. The only building we really didn't do was the DPW. Weatherization was at most of the locations, and then solar, domestic, hot water, we employ at the police and the two fire stations. So this was a great thing, and I have, my next slide is going to show you some of the savings that were generated from the project.
Joe, will you cover potential future conservation steps that you envision, or is that part of this?
One of, it's not part of this, but one of the things we've been talking about is doing an LED project. When we did this, the LED technology was really new, and it didn't have a good payback, but things have changed substantially, so we, we have talked about that. We did do an LED conversion at Town Hall of all the common area lighting and Joshua Eaton.
All the hallway lights and Joshua Eaton.
And we did, yeah, and we took advantage of a rebate through RMLD for both those projects, so. So this slide right here is going to, is basically showing you, if you look at the baseline period, these are town buildings we're talking about. So the baseline is when they came in, and that was our consumption, the first column right there in kilowatt hours, and then the performance period, which was August of '16 through June of 2017. So if you look at the reduction, it's 93,439 kilowatt hours savings. The police station, if you look, didn't do so well, but there's been, there's a lot more activity in the police station now, and there's a lot more equipment in that police station that's being maintained, which drives the electricity up. But the message here, though, is that the consumption is down. It's 93,439 kilowatt hours down. The demand is also down, too. Demand is a tough thing to sort of do in a, to manage in municipal and school buildings because you really can't shut school and, they want you to be able to, we do it by staggering start times on our equipment. So our demand charges based, you know, a lot of the charges come from that, but we try to limit that and keep that cost down by starting up equipment, staggering start times in all the buildings when we're running it, even in the wintertime. We won't start the whole building up at once. It'll come on one part of the time. The gas usage in thermes, the big one, as you can see from the, you know, the DPW, didn't help us this past period, but that's nothing we can do about that. What we are doing to battle that this year is we have some capital money, and we're going to install some timers on the overhead doors and all the shops on the front of the building, just like we did on the others. So we're hoping by doing that, when there is heavy use at the building, the doors will automatically come down. That's where you lose a lot of the heat at that location.
Joe, but we didn't do any improvements at the garage for...
We did. We did new Sterling units in the garage over there, which are the two giant heaters that heat the high bay garage out there. Yep. But that's just driven, this is weather-related spike. And then you can see the water and sewer use in gallons is down also. On the school side, we've done really well. I mean, the school side, you know, we've saved in electricity 2,241,000 kilowatt hours in electricity. Our demand is also down, which is great. Our use in thermes, again, is down, and our water and sewer is down. Overall, in our total town and school picture, if you add them up, the savings is 3.3 million kilowatt hours over the baseline, 168,000 thermes and 2,139 in water. So we have done well.
What does that translate to in dollars?
My question is, I...
He knew you'd ask.
Well, we spent $5 million that we didn't really have to spend.
We're spending about $400,000 a year in debt service on that. In addition, what Joe was saying earlier is there was some amount, let's say 3 million of planned capital that didn't need to get done because it was done as part of the project. In a sense, that's saved.
So it's a $2 million net?
Well, you did 3 million all at once that you would have done, and you did another 2 million that you maybe didn't plan on to start. It's costing you $400,000 a year, and we're saving about $750,000 plus or minus. And if you really study it, what the objective was, in addition to saving money, is we shifted savings into the operating budget for the town and the schools. So that's where the savings is, and the spend is in the capital plan, which you spend 5% a year anyways. No big deal. But, you know, it's freed up 3/4 of a million dollars on, that's a rough number, annually.
So it begs the question, is there, is there like a performance contracting, too, out there? Maybe not just the lights that you talked about, but something, I mean, clearly, here's something, you know, we talk about tax dollars being used and what's the benefit. You just quantify in dollars and cents, not value of services, dollars and cents. You spent a dollar, you saved a lot. So, you know, does it make sense to look at doing this again for things that we didn't touch?
One of the reasons we didn't, my reason selfishly, is we were too busy with this building. You know, Joe, as the project manager, is flat out. I'd say now it's an opportunity to look at it again. I know some of the break evens that were mentioned in '09 were, you know, 50 to 100 years.
The windows were on payback.
And I know that that has shortened up. So I think a town should generally look at this stuff every, you pick the number, 10 years, 20 years, I don't know, as a matter of course. But I also remember there was a small group doing the performance contracting process. It was intense work.
Right.
It was Mary Delia at the time was leading it, Joe and I. There was a substantial amount of work involved, so you don't necessarily want to do it too often.
Well, you had, I mean, you had to do the work in the summer for the schools when they were, I mean, I remember it was, it was a big...
The process of selecting a vendor was pretty intense. And then choosing what to do, because, you know, we got a list of, I don't know, I'll say $10 million worth of improvements and chose to do five.
It was ten, I remember. It was ten.
Yeah.
And, you know, in retrospect, maybe we should have done the ten.
Maybe it's now more cost-effective, yeah. So, yeah, we should look at it.
Joe, are any of our buildings, I'm sorry, Barry, did I cut somebody off?
No.
Go ahead. Are any of our buildings still steam at this point, or are they all hot water?
The West Side Fire Station and Pot of Coolidge. Sorry.
Are those candidates to try to change, to change over?
Coolidge would be a really big project to do that. We have talked about looking into doing that. It's just that it's, the new section of the building is...
A new section is hot water.
Hot water and the old is steam.
And a couple of the, a couple of the rooftop units, the one that serves the gym and the one that serves the multipurpose room are also hydroonic, but the rest of the building is still steam.
It's not the most efficient system in the world, a steam system. Thank you. I'm sorry, Andy.
Bob, so if I understood the numbers correctly, for this project, the debt service is about $400,000. The savings are about $750,000 a year, so we're netting around $350,000.
Paul Park, yeah, it's close.
Roughly. Yeah, so.
And again, to emphasize, the spend is in the capital side and the relief is on the operating side.
Right, right. That's great. And that was a leap of faith back then. It's like, we hadn't done it.
It was an educated leap of faith.
Right, I mean, it was, it was a risk, but it was sort of...
Oh, yeah, there was no, I mean, they guaranteed a certain amount of savings.
Right.
So in that sense...
Which we exceeded.
Yeah, which we exceeded. I don't think any of us knew how much we'd exceeded by. We might have had our private estimates. I'd say we've done generally better than I would have expected. I don't know what other people think.
During times of austerity, this, I mean, this is, this is a win.
Yeah. I mean, you can look at the consumption now and say Redding is very efficient. Could we be better? You could probably always be better. And I'm sure this stacks up against most schools and cities and towns.
And now we know how to do it. We didn't know how to do it before.
Other towns have come and asked us about how, what, how our success was with this project, and it's been successful, but one of the things I tell people, North Andover, I'm from North Andover, and I talked to their town manager about it. I said, if you don't have a good preventive maintenance program, then this project is not something anybody wants to undertake, and that's the key to it, because they do what's called measurement verification, and it's over a 15-year period, because normally it's a 15-year payback for everything. So if, as long as you're maintaining the equipment, you're good. But if you're not maintaining the equipment, they won't guarantee the savings. So that's, that's the big thing. You have to maintain what they're putting in and do it religiously, so.
And Bob, the debt, the 400, the 350, you know, the $400,000 a year that drops off for how long?
Knew you were going to ask, so I'm flipping through, just trying to find it.
This is not orchestrated.
One, two, three, four, five, six, counting next year, seven more years.
Yeah, when the 19th...
Question from the audience? Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Doczio. One question, you were talking, and I think Barry, you brought it up, too, the LED conversion now is very different. It might be something that's worth looking at, so I'm going to probably say you're...
Yep.
It's, the economics have changed dramatically.
Thank you.
Yes, in the back.
Hi, Joe. We're Joe.
Thank you. Why don't you use the mic? They can't hear you on TV without the mic.
Nice job of presentation. My question was, my daughter's a kindergarten student at the Killam School, that's why I was here. I thought we were going to talk about renovations at the Killam School, but I understand.
That's coming.
It's coming, okay, now. So, yes, talking about energy efficiency, is there any talks about entering in any more power purchase agreements, solar panels, all the roofs in town?
I can answer part of that. We've discussed for years with RMLD the prospect of solar. For an opener, solar does not save you money in today's economy, period. The rooftops of our town and school buildings are not conducive to that generally. My recollection from a few years back is the best option at the time was some kind of a solar wall next to the fieldhouse, for instance, and there was little to no roof space available for the solar arrays that you would need. We've discussed many other options, like the high school, some kind of a carport, like is at Endicott College. You know, nothing, nothing strikes us as being an enormous savings. It might be worth doing, but it's not going to change the economics right now. And the light department is testing either one or two programs in Wilmington right now. I know one's on a roof of a private building, the other one, I'm not sure if they've launched yet, to see what the results are. So it's possible.
Bill?
It could also be a fire hazard. If you watched the news the other night, the fire department does not like to go in, you know, just to...
Any questions?
So this next slide just gives you an idea of FY16, we did 2,381 work orders, and we've completed 20, we've completed 2,599 work orders processed, and that includes in-house and outsourced work orders. We also added a few different locations to this, Athletic Fields, Lionsden, and Rise Preschool. We split that out from the high school to track it. But you can pretty much see where the work is going on in all of the town and the school Just to give everybody an idea, we just did a rundown today on the equipment that we do maintain, and this is, this is stuff that's in our preventive maintenance program. We maintain 54 boilers in the town of Redding, 300-plus unit ventilators, which are in all the classrooms of, in all the school buildings, 150-plus fan coil units, which you find in hallways and vestibules, 305 exhaust fans, 80 rooftop units, which is air handlers and RTUs, 200 miscellaneous pumps and compressors, 45 split systems, 14 elevators, five lifts, 15 alarm systems, and 97 roof systems and windows. We've been putting windows in as we've replaced them in different locations. This is stuff that just is, this is what we have in our preventive maintenance program system-wise that we maintain for the town.
No partridge in a pear tree?
This next slide right here just gives you an idea. Last year, we added a, an additional, two years ago, no, it was last year.
Last year.
No, it was last year, it was last year. We added an additional carpenter with the purpose of freeing up our electrician and plumber from doing general trades work, so that they could go out and do diagnostics on some of the bigger stuff to save us money. We've gone from sixty-eight percent in-house to seventy-three percent of in-house work, which is lower than the amount of billable hours that are coming in from outside contractors, because those guys are doing what their core, their core mission is, which is plumbing and electrical.
Is that the percent of work orders or the percent of the dollars represented?
Work orders.
But if what of it were dollars?
I could figure that out and get it back to you guys.
It's just a clear demonstration of the way that you're, you know, working towards efficiencies and economies, Joe. I think this is, I mean, you know, to drill down to the exact dollar amount is maybe an exercise that you don't need to consume yourself with this second, in my opinion. I mean, the point is, we know we're paying a lot less every time it's an internal work assignment as compared with the one that's, you know, sent out for billable hours outside.
Right, exactly.
By a, by a large margin.
And it's at prevailing wage, which is substantial, correct, exactly. When I go into my next slides, we're going to talk about, you know, the breakdown of the budgets, but there are some things that we're on the hook for that we have to do, and then I'm just going to read them to you guys. It's fire suppression, we're mandated by state law to have that done, inspections, fire alarm three times a year, elevator sprinkler, fire pumps. Boilers are mandated by our insurance company, do an external inspection and then an internal every three years. And then every year, we have the fire department and the building inspector go through all of our buildings and give, to get our occupancy for the upcoming year. And so these things are all built into our budget to maintain the buildings, that we have to do. And not to mention the preventive maintenance, which is stipulated maintenance of all the equipment, to maintain it and to keep it running properly. So, this next slide just gives you folks a quick look at the town facilities budget. I mentioned that the salaries are up five point one percent, that's the breakout right there. And the town building expense line is up thirteen point six one. It's an overall increase of seven point three five percent. But like I said, it's largely due, mostly due to the, the cleaning services that we talked about in the town, in the town and school buildings, I mean, sorry, the town buildings. So that's the breakout right there. This next slide shows the, the core facilities budget.
Those are contractual, all those cleaning services, right? So once we're in, we're in.
We're in.
You said it was just renegotiated, or we just got into?
We, we got into the contract with them mid-year in seventeen. And so that was a half year, and this is a full year in right now than next year.
So it's, it's obviously a, a big jump. Are we getting more than we were in the old con, I mean, we're paying more, obviously, but are we getting more?
We're getting more, we added more scope to this building right here, because the building got larger. We also added more scope to the police department and some, and days of service at a couple, two other locations, I believe.
So can you draw a differential between that cost and, I mean, if you were hiring full-time employees to do all that work?
It's much cheaper to do it, it's much cheaper to outsource it, because you're not paying the fringe benefit, exactly.
Even though, you know, it appears to be driving, you know, an out-of-sink percentage compared to what we take in. When it, when you match it to actual cost, it's, my guess is it's a, it's a fractional number of what it would cost with all those employees.
I think a, a full-time person for the cleaning company, if we hired one, would be around thirty thousand dollars a year, and I would, and we would not be able to pay a full-time, an FTE, that kind of money. And they're doing it with total number of people, like five people roughly to do it?
On the town side, yeah.
Joe, as we go forward into FY20, '21, and beyond, would we expect some diminishment in that five point one percent annual increase? I would think we would.
I'll answer that.
Sure.
Dan, for the, both wage lines, if you notice, the largest increase, well, I guess it's not obvious, it's union. We're shifting from a school calendar to a town calendar, which is less days off. That's something we have to negotiate in the first quarter next year, and that's the reason they're a little higher, is effectively we have to buy some time off.
Right, so would that settle out?
From then on, it'll be normal.
In the three percent range?
Yep.
Oh, the finance, could you do one?
Thank you, Peter.
So this is the, again, this is the core facilities budget, which salaries are up five point one percent, which Bob just explained, same thing on the core side. And the expenses are down point one five percent. And you're going to see there's been, there's some movement around in the lines, and this, there was a reduction in our, our other repair, in other maintenance and repair line, which we moved money out of that line to fund a line for ice melt, which we weren't tracking before. We provide ice melt for all the town and school buildings, and we want to be able to track how much we're spending. And there were some one-time expenses in the budget, a total of sixty thousand dollars that came out. And even with the increases in the utilities, it's only a point one five, it's, it's down point one five percent.
Joe, could you back up one slide, please?
I'm not sure.
Um, there.
Right there?
So that jump again is custodial service.
All right, thank you.
So this next slide right here, we, we thought it would be helpful for folks to see with the breakdown. But in school versus town, you can see what our electricity, natural gas, and total utilities request is for FY19, and then our expenses.
Any sense of how much that three point eight nine is price and how much of it is volume?
That's a good question.
That is a good question, no.
Okay, just curious, are you just paying more for the same, or are you using?
Generally, it's price, but I couldn't be precise.
Joe, I know this has come up before, town meeting and, and other areas, but do we negotiate a preferred price with our MLD?
Not that I know of. There was some discussion of a school rate. I don't honestly remember if that came to fruition.
Student rate for electricity?
They want to sell off peak, obviously, they want to sell off peak demand. Schools don't operate in the summer, so that's good. But I, I couldn't honestly tell you how far that got.
Is that worth kind of conversations?
Dan, we could bring that up when we meet in January with the committee. We may have it, I don't know, I'm not saying we don't, I just don't know.
This gives you an idea of what the town looks like from the same perspective?
So can you go back one, go back one?
You're okay having a smaller extraordinary repair on schools, taking twenty K risk there?
I think some of that was a one-time.
It was a one-time, all right.
Yeah, that was probably a one-time project, and.
I don't know for sure.
Back up one?
So, both of those are running very lean. I mean, to the negative lean, in both cases.
So same story there, the FY18 budget is, is eighty-one, but the town manager budget is twenty-one for the following year. So that must have been a one-timer, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at other maintenance.
Right, that's exactly right, that was, that's a one-time.
Bob, could you help me out here along the, the newness sheets that you gave us? What's the easiest way to compare this to the slide? Or is there not an easy way?
That's a really challenging question. I won't go into details, but the way the school department budget and the town budget are set up are differently. It's very difficult to show the same format for facilities because of that as the rest of the town departments. So when we present the final product to town meeting and to FinCom, it's all scrubbed, if you will. So the thing in front of you is by building, which really isn't helpful for most people as opposed to by topic. So there's no easy answer, sorry.
But it all ties out?
It does all tie up.
Yeah, but this is the executive summary, pulling all of those pieces in.
Yeah, what you got is every gruesome detail of every line item that Joe tracks.
You'd have to put it in, you know.
And this is the trend, and, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. So, so Joe, is there anything different you wish you could do, anything, you know? I know you put in the same, you know, in terms of FTEs and, and staffing, are there like, you know?
What's in there right now, what we're asking for is, like I mentioned, a lot of the state mandated things that we need to do, that we need to get done. There's a dollar value to that, and that's built in there to maintain the buildings. We would, we would love to be able to hire an HVAC mechanic that has some controls experience and has his licenses, but the market is so good right now, we just, you, we couldn't get anybody for what we're paying. And it's really not even worth even trying, we, we've, we've talked to, there's a few people that we've sort of talked to, but the money's just not there right now. If things change, we could, we could, we could bring that in-house, we would save quite a bit of money, just like we do with the electrician. So.
And, and also too, can you talk about the relationship now between the facilities department? Now we have a fully operational buildings committee. Are they like sort of doing, helping in terms of long-term analysis of our, our facilities and kind of recommendations, are they, are you working with them?
I am.
Not on a specific project, but sort of overall on facilities, and if you are, can you talk about how you do that?
Yeah, so right now, they're working on, they've, they've been working really hard on getting an assessment tool together that they can use to do assessments of all of our locations. They've been through Killam, Birch Meadow, and the Joshua Eden. In January, they plan on going back into Killam with the assessment tool to use that, and it's something that they're going to, because that was the first school they did. Now they want to go in and test the tool out. So they're going to use that to give, give the building a rating, if you will. And then the goal is to go through all the schools and then to extend that out to the town buildings. So Kevin and myself will meet with them once a month, we'll probably be meeting twice in January, and it's been very productive, they're very helpful, there's a great group of people that are on that committee. A lot of knowledge.
And what's in the assessment tool, is this sort of rating the building or rating its kind of use of wage?
Yeah, my understanding is they were going to have like a, a green, a yellow, and a red. You know, in that, but there'll be a narrative to it, so people can look at the documents. So in twenty years from now, you can look at, here's what we did at Killam, here's what we did, I'm just using that as an example, but whatever, one of the schools, and they can, they can say, here's where it is at this point in time, because it's really a point-in-time thing when they do an assessment, because things change.
And then that can actually help focus and direct and shape the capital plan, so.
Correct.
We put the money where it's really needed faster.
They've, they've, they've looked at the capital plan, they've looked at our, we've talked to them, we actually did a demo for them on the, on our utility track software. They wanted to see how that all worked, they wanted to see how the buildings were performing. And we, we got really good feedback. They, when they, when the buildings they walked through, there was no, oh my god moments in any of the boiler rooms. So it was good, no, it was good, but they're, they're, they've, they've got good information, and they've got, they're a great resource to us as a department.
And that's a volunteer committee, that's supposed to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
And Barry, and for all of your knowledge, they meet in January, I, I know it's early, is it the ninth or something, or eighth, maybe?
Yeah, the eighth.
They're going to do a lessons learned on this, on this building. And the project manager we hired, plus Joe, plus myself, plus the building committee, is just going to listen to stories of what could have been better, what went well, what didn't go well. So, we get that feedback loop. We wanted to wait about six months and think about things, especially with the project manager, and he's going to come in and tell his tale. So I think that'll be helpful, they're very much looking forward to that.
Especially if you contemplate new buildings and major rehabs of older, older buildings, those lessons learned are, say valuable to all.
Yep.
We'll use.
Any other questions? Yes. Elaine, you may have to come up, it's a really quiet room.
Do I have a question on the elevators on the slide? I just was curious, is a big change, must be on the previous slide? From seventeen to eighteen, I think. Oh, yeah, no, yes, from, sorry, from the eighteen actual, waiting apples to the budget, oh, we're not complete, but from seventeen to eighteen, I was just curious, that's a big increase in the budget. I don't think we added any elevators, though.
No, but it might have had to do with how we were tracking the elevator expenses, because in some cases, we weren't putting everything under the elevator expense lines, and we actually.
Other.
Yes.
Okay. I have a question about, and I might have missed it. And do you look at, do you evaluate like per square foot and compare any of the buildings, or, you know, any of the buildings across the town holdings to see, you know, if you're, if there's an efficiency that's different, I don't know if you look at the cost per square foot?
Were you here when we were going over the, the Nebraska?
No, I wasn't, I was a little late, so I apologize for that.
It's okay, no, I can pull it up for you. So like, if you look at the, on the schools, I have to pull that, you can't see. Buildings like the Wood End would be one I would talk about in terms of like consumption? Like how it performs, I guess, in general?
So do these ones, Joe.
I'll go back to your charts there, Joe, you passed, Larry, show what's per square foot.
Oh, you mean, you want to go, okay.
Was that, which way was that?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Natural gas there.
This one right here might be more helpful?
Oh, I'm totally mixed consumption.
Okay.
I was also thinking about just the ma, like maintenance, the maintenance amount of dollars that they're spending, doing work orders in the buildings, and whether.
You got that, too, work orders.
That that's useful to track?
Yeah, I mean, we're tracking things like, well, to answer your question, I mean, if you look at these slides right here, you can see what we're spending, this is kilowatt hours per square foot for the different locations, and it shows you where, what buildings are consuming the most in terms of that. And you can see most of the schools are pretty consistent across the board. You know, natural gas, that gives you an idea, right there. DPW garage is really high because of, you know, of the amount of sanding and salting operations and snowstorms, and the activity that goes on down at that location. In terms of like what we're spending, what buildings cost the most to operate, is that what you're asking me?
Do they perform the routine of preventative maintenance?
So the high school would be the most expensive building to run, because it's.
But it's the biggest, I mean, is it, is it also the most expensive per square foot? Like, that's what I was looking for, there's something.
Actually, no, it's actually not. And I, you know, I, I should have brought that slide, we had a, we did a, on our utility track program, I'd be happy to share it with you, we looked at that. The high school actually performs really well, believe it or not, in terms of what it costs to run per square foot. It's not extremely higher than the other buildings in terms of what it costs to run it per square foot, but there's the most mechanical equipment at that location, just to give you an idea. In that building alone, there's like sixty unit ventilators in that own, that building alone, so.
And I just had one other.
Sure.
So you were talking about the assessment the building committee is, is doing? But you, you do constant and routine assessments of all of our buildings, so I just didn't want anyone to come away thinking that we haven't been assessing and monitoring the school buildings.
Yep.
Until the building committee came along with something that you wanted.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we, we, there are things that we do on a, on a, not only with our preventive maintenance program, but we, we ourselves do inspections of the buildings and do our own walkthroughs to make sure that we're on track with certain things. When they were walking the, the buildings that they did, walk with us, they could, they, they saw that we did have a robust preventive maintenance program in place. So there was no doubt that they, you know, we were doing everything we should be doing in the buildings. So, thank you.
Yes, Mark.
Hi, Joe. Can you go back to the software slides just for a second? The question is, I know last year there were some modules you hadn't yet implemented that wanted to. At this point, are they all up and running?
Yes, so utility track is up and running now? Which we can, it's really good, because we can look at our information like. we can look at our information, like I just showed you folks on the Naresco slides, and we can verify that and match it up with our Utility Track program. And it's really good. We had a, if we, if we have a spike in a utility, it'll, it'll alert us when we're entering the bill. So we're entering the bill in there for, whether it's what commodity, it might be water or sewer, it'll tell you that this is much higher than this time last year. So then that runs a red flag up. So that's been launched. The other one that was launched is the Facility Scheduling Automation, which ties the rentals into the, into the energy management system. So these, these modules are all talking to each other, which is great.
I'm only half kidding and wondering that, since you're teaching all sorts of other people how to do this stuff and how valuable it is, if that is a chargeable service.
Any other comments? Joe? That it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Excellent, Joe. Thank you very much.
While I get prepared for the next one, I can tell you that the Killam second graders take a tour of Police, Fire, Town Hall, and RCTV pretty much every year that I can remember. And the only thing that's ever competed with Police and Fire is the Utility Track that Joe showed them last year. When they saw that he could turn on and off the temperature in their teacher's room, they were fascinated.
And that's under lock and key at all times, I'm sure.
Yes. And they can, Joe can almost work from home, but not quite. John and I are gonna talk about shared costs. Specifically, John will cover Killam, and I'll do some other things. First is energy, and Joe has really just given you an overview of the core, of facilities, rather, portions. The other two pieces are street lighting and fuel in the DPW Department, which is centralized for town and schools. And as you can see, those are both down. All these numbers are essentially unchanged from the fall financial form. Couple of dollars here and there, but it didn't add up to even $2,000. I'm gonna spend most of the time this evening talking about capital and debt. The baseline of our capital plan right now is the one that was passed by November Town Meeting. Any changes we make will reflect a change from November. In FY19, our debt service declines by just over $350,000 inside the levy. As you can see, there's a few projects that are being repaid, and no new debt is forecast. So there, you can see the drop from 1.87 to 1.5 million. That's, that's part one. Part two is, in FY19, the FinCom target of 5% has not been followed for the last few years. We've, if you will, allowed some money to go into the operating budgets because of our challenges. I am proposing to reduce that amount almost in half, from 280,000 to about 140,000. So about 150,000, new money, if you will, is freed up for capital, if FinCom and Town Meeting agree. And I would propose to take step two in FY20 and restore the capital plan to the full 5%, by the way. So that's an increase of 350. I guess the thing I didn't mention is just the growth of the overall budget raises the 5% target also. The 350 and the 150 and the 150 add up to 650,000, if I did my math right, of more capital spending just naturally than it existed last year. There's, this is the part where the community is often asked for discussion of long-term projects, large projects. Right now, in the November capital plan, as approved by Town Meeting, there is a series of infrastructure improvements, and those are in the General Fund, Water, Sewer, and Stormwater. I have no idea what the costs will be, what the findings will be. The request for next year is $100,000 from each of those to do a study, to do some field testing. And then just purely picking a number out of the air, I said $1 million for each of those is gonna be a planning tool for debt service. And that's in the capital plan and fully funded. The DPW Building Project, which is a very complex issue, is also fully inside the levy as currently proposed, very much in draft form. John and I, and Joe, and Chief Segala have discussed building security. We're gonna make one recommended change, which is to move the Dispatch Center up a couple of years in the capital plan and do that first. That's gonna be essentially the hub of all building security, so we really don't want to start doing some building security improvements to the existing Dispatch Center and then find out we have to do something different. So the Dispatch Center is in the capital plan currently. We're gonna suggest we move that up. Outside the levy, again, John will talk about Killam's school improvements. There is then the remaining building security improvements, and the athletic improvements in and around Birch Meadow and the high school. And just to keep it on your radar, not yet planned or discussed really at any length, is the Community Center that you heard about when the UMass folks came in and talked about our senior population sometime in the summer. Joe?
Well, who decides what's inside the levy and what's outside of the levy?
You as a Town Meeting member.
Who proposes?
Well, the Town Manager would propose it to the Finance Committee, who would then propose it to Town Meeting. To give you a little more detail on inside the levy and the things I just mentioned, again, the start of the $400,000 of an assessment, this is both for above and below the ground improvements that we need in the downtown area and the Walkers Brook area. It could be something as simple as parking above ground and water, sewer, stormwater capacity underground. Again, $4 million of debt is planned. The DPW Building Project, again, is a very complex situation. The math is very, very much in draft form, but we've put a placeholder in the budget for 25-year debt service beginning in FY22, and obviously we'll have extensive discussions well before that comes anywhere close. And then, as I mentioned, the first stage of the building security, we would suggest to move the $500,000 Dispatch Center up two years to next year, and we would defer 450,000 of other improvements that we had been discussing and was voted by the November Town Meeting. But that's essentially a swap. I'm gonna turn it over now to John to discuss the Killam School.
Sure, thank you. Before, before I begin, I, I do wanna give, give a huge round of compliments to the Facilities Department for the work that they do each and every day. Last night, I had Chief Segala came and talked a little bit at the School Committee meeting, and we talked about the strong relationship we have with, with our public safety, and I, we have a very similar relationship with our Facilities Department. And I just want to thank Joe and Kevin Cabuzzi and Kevin Gerson. You know, along with Gail Dowd and I, we, we meet on a regular basis. We, we discuss what's going on in the schools and in the different projects that are going on, and they do a tremendous job in our schools. And having said that, I think you're gonna see what is reflected in the report that was done by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, is that the buildings overall, the school buildings overall are very well maintained and, and clean. So recently, there was a report that was released by MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, and for those of you that don't know, MSBA is the prime state funding source when there are school building projects going on. So when a, when a town is moving forward with a building project, depending on the community, and depending on some of the parameters that are in the statute for MSBA, a certain percentage could be funded on that, on that school building project and awarded by MSBA. We've had several projects over the years funded by, percentages funded by MSBA. So recently, they released a 2016 school survey report. That is on their website. They are required periodically by the statute to conduct school surveys, to understand the building condition of all public schools. So essentially, they went to every public school that was less than 10 years old in, in Massachusetts during the 2016 year. The last time that was completed was in 2010. It should be noted, though, that that survey data that they do is only one of the many tools that they use when they determine an application is put on a list for funding. And so they use that as just one, one piece of it. For reading itself, seven of the eight schools were surveyed, Wood End being the newest school and under 10 years old at the time was not, was not surveyed. Each building is given a rating on a scale from one to four. One is the highest, four is the lowest. And it's given in two categories. One is for building condition and one is for general environment. All Reading Schools surveyed receive a rate, received a rating of one, or the highest score, for general environment condition. So what's in this category? The things that are in this category include learning environment, which is space and educational quality, building condition rating, cleanliness and maintenance, building safety, which includes school security and fire life safety, universal accessibility, which is site accessibility, building accessibility, academic sufficiency, which is the number of academic classrooms for the enrollment, program sufficiency, which is the presence of specialized room and core spaces like gymnasiums and libraries, art and music rooms, and instructional technology. So adequate Wi-Fi access, power infrastructure, and classroom technology. So every Reading School that was surveyed, six, seven out of the eight, received a rating of one, or the best rating in that category. In the building condition category, four of the seven schools, which is Barrows, the high school, Eaton, and Parker, received a rating of one, again, the highest rating. Coolidge and Birch Meadow received a rating of two. Killam received a rating of three. The criteria for this rating includes building analysis, roofing, exterior, the exterior piece, and other, and other areas that are critical to the conditions of, of that, the boilers, the HVAC, all of that. What they, they did not talk about with, with Killam is that there are definitely some, some things that Killam has that, that we know of, that are some deficiencies right now that need to be addressed. So structurally, Killam is a very sound building, and, but it is showing obviously the wear and tear of a, a building that was built in 1969 and has not had any, any renovations to it. So what, what this means is, for the, from the MSBA point of view, is that MSBA, under the statute, has eight categories that they look at to prioritize whether or not a school goes on, on the list or not. And right now, Killam does not fit into any of the eight categories. So here's some of the categories that, that would, that the statute talks about. One is to prevent severe overcrowding, or if you have a population bubble coming through, if you have a short-term enrollment growth, if you are replacing or adding to obsolete buildings in order to provide, provide for a full range of programs, addressing racial imbalance, if the, the building itself in its current state is, is in an unhealthy condition, that students should not be in the building at that time. None of those categories right now would qualify Killam to be put on a list for MSBA funding. Now, we do know that Killam has some building deficiencies. The biggest ones being handicap accessibility. It was, it was built in 1969 where the ADA requirements were not in place. The lead in the water, which right now, over the last two years, we've worked very closely with the water department, and that has been safely mitigated with bottled water. It does have aging windows and doors in the classrooms. In addition to the age of the building, there are some areas that do need to be updated and renovated. There are some things like the fire suppression system, which we do not have a fire suppression system at Killam. However, we do have an updated fire alarm panel, which is actually for life safety, is, is a critical component. The fire suppression system is obviously put in place to protect property where the life safety, the fire alarm panel is used to protect life and people. So, and, and that still, that still matches according to the current building code, because there have not been major renovations done to Killam. So the next logical steps is, we've had several conversations recently about what to do next with Killam, is it really needs to have a feasibility study done on the building to see what are, what are exactly the things that need to be done. We know of some of them, but obviously, we would like to have some more information. I think also Killam needs to be looked at as part of an entire elementary school plan in terms of, are there other things that need to be done at the same time, where Killam is gonna get some work done anyway? Do we need to look at Killam as part of a larger elementary school issue that may surround space or, or other needs that we have at our elementary levels? So the next logical step would be to do some sort of feasibility study under the guise, I would assume, of the Town Building Committee to, to move forward on that.
This year, and for the plans for the future, the Building Committee has 150,000 as a budget, so that would certainly be a candidate even as soon as this year. We've never built a building or done any work in that sense with the new Building Committee, so we'll kind of learn on the way. But, you know, looking at the language of the Building Committee, it would be the Schools Committee that's the sponsoring agent, and would have to make a request to the Permanent Building Committee to kick off work, so to speak. And I've met sometimes with the Building Committee, certainly not as often as Joe. There's certain things they won't touch. A new building, or a study of a building, or a renovation of a building is absolutely something they're interested in. The remaining building security improvements, at November Town Meeting, we had actually cut out 450,000 of the basic security improvements suggested to us and moved the funding up a year. As, as especially John and I discussed the different ways to possibly do that, and brought in the Police Chief and the Facilities Director, the most logical thing to do first was the Dispatch Center, not anything else. So that's why we're suggesting that 450 get pushed back and the Dispatch Center get, get done. That leaves the entire building security improvements suggestion that's just under $4 million. And finally, I won't go over this list in detail, but on the current capital plan is almost, or just over eight and a half million dollars of Birch Meadow Field and High School Athletic Improvements. And again, these items are suggested for this time by me to be done outside the levy, because there's just no chance that in the short run, meaning in the next five years, we could do all this work inside the levy. It's just not possible. To Mr. Brown's point, that doesn't mean that's how they end up being financed. That's just my suggestion right now to balance a budget.
So as a debt exclusion?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move off
Yeah.
John, the report that you just shared with us that was not up there, you know, the, the study of the schools that was done independently?
The MSBA report, yes.
Can you, can you send that to us?
Sure.
Because there was a lot of really pertinent data, you know, building by building, and trying to keep up with that was
Absolutely, yeah. No, absolutely. I can do that.
If you could send that to us, that would be great.
The other point, excuse me, worth mentioning for the security improvements, and then especially on this slide for the athletic improvements. John and Joe and I have worked, mostly John and Joe have worked on mitigation. So Joe has spent $30,000 this year on extending the life of some of these assets. So right now, this debt exclusion, if you will, is in the capital plan in FY21, two years from now. Doesn't have to be that soon. It can be pushed out further. And that's what we've been working on, is to not crowd in the short-term needs with the longer-term needs. Whether that's, you know, the community's choice is, is up to the community. But none of these improvements are essential to be done in the next year or two.
Well, that's a list of seven, though, Bob. Would you tackle some of the, I assume they don't all age at the same rate?
You certainly could do them in any order, one at a time. Absolutely.
So four of those are directly related to the school. The last two are somewhat indirectly related to the school, because they aren't necessarily, that's more part of the Birch Meadow master plan, would you say?
Right.
Because those are not property, I mean, Birch Meadow beyond kind of a demarcation line
Right, right.
Is, is town kind of managed and controlled versus stuff inside, which I think is represented in those, in those earlier bullets are really, you know, under school purview.
To that point, after some discussion after the last Town Meeting, I agreed with John, and we moved the four items at the top into the core facilities budget and out of recreation, because they're not under the care, custody, or control of and out of recreation because they're not under the care, custody or control of the town in any sense.
They're not.
And it was just an optics thing, we'd always put recreation stuff in recreation and not thought about it, but to your point exactly, those are moved under facilities, they belong to the school committee.
Because I think for, for people who are making decisions about how to vote and what they want to do, they need to have some clarity about, you know, who's managing what and how it's being done and how it's being used, some general public, you know, and, you know, interestingly, some of the stuff in the first four are being used heavily by the general, you know, public, but on a rental basis, you know, compared with the other, the last two, which are, you know, general public, but school used, not on a rental basis. So I, I think it's important to clarify that for those people who are making value judgments about what they want to do with their money, with their tax dollars.
And on this list, I know the first one, two, three, four, five items quite well. Birch Meadow Phase Two is still being discussed by the Recreation Committee, that's, that one million is still an estimate.
John, some questions on the MSBA.
Sure.
Maybe they, they don't give you this clarity, but was the three, on the high side a three or is it, did they give you any indication with?
Yeah, they just give you the number three.
Okay. And in terms of, um, and maybe this is.
I, I should have, I'm sorry, I should have pulled that, when they did it in 2010, it was, Killam was a two. And my guess is that the biggest reason for that is the, um, handicap accessibility and the lead, the lead in the water.
And is there any guidance that they provide in terms of longevity, longevity or lifetime that's, that's noteworthy? In terms of the building, the utility of the building, the remaining operating life, do they make any comments like that or it's purely about the current condition of the building?
Um, it, it's the two categories that I mentioned, the general building condition and environmental condition. So, um, the environmental condition is a, is a very strong rating.
Yeah.
And it's the general building condition that was, that was the three. And in the categories that I mentioned, I mean, it's really those areas, the handicap accessibility, um, the fire suppression, the, uh, the plumbing, um, those, those are the areas that.
Do they address security in, in that report?
That was in the other one and we received a one.
Okay.
We have similar security in all of our, uh, schools.
So when, um, so when you send us that report, any, that, anything you have that kind of probably sets the groundwork for how to understand the rating system would be valuable.
The, the report you're going to get is for all of Massachusetts. It, we didn't get a specific individual report for Reading.
So you've got to go in and find the buildings and, and master.
Correct. It's right on the MSBA website, but I'll send you the, the, I'll send it to Bob and you can.
Well, I just, I assumed because you were reading from a report.
No, I'm reading it from my notes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You, you homogenized.
Yes.
The word.
Yeah, I went through the report, yes.
That would be valuable just because it would save us an enormous amount of digging.
So one of the, one of the things that you talked about is sort of like, okay, well, we didn't get onto the SBA list, we have to do an assessment. And Bob, you alluded to the fact that there is some money in the, um, building committee. Is that where you envision, um, sort of that getting funded or is that going to, do we need to go outside of that or is that enough to get that done?
I would say, um, process-wise, I mean, this, this ball is clearly in the school committee's court, just to be clear.
But the funding is, the funding is.
But, um, there is, you know, a hundred and fifty this year, a hundred and fifty next year of funding available is all I know. What it would cost, we've kicked around some numbers, we don't know what the right scope of work is. It, that could be sufficient, we don't know.
Barry, if I can just, if I can just, if I can just clarify, we did not apply to go on a list. What I'm reporting to you is how, by the statute, how MSBA prioritizes where a school falls.
So we're not sort of.
We've not, we've not yet, no.
Need to be a four probably to.
No, that, remember, that's just one tool that they use.
This is a general information tool that by statute they're required to provide.
Correct.
Is what I, the way I understood it.
The application process begins in January.
So is what, I guess what I'm trying to call out from what you're saying is that because the building is, you know, it, it might be old, it's not necessarily in, in a poor condition that you think it would, we would rate high on their, uh, on their list and therefore unlikely to get funding?
The good news is that we've done a good job maintaining our buildings.
It's a bad news.
The bad news is that we've done a good job of maintaining our buildings. And, you know, there are some deficiencies, as I mentioned earlier, with, with Killam, but, um, not in the MSBA's eyes, is it a higher priority than other schools?
Well, you know, in a general way, you've got a building that's forty-eight years old.
Correct.
I don't care how well you've maintained it.
Right.
You know, it, I mean, if you think about this in the private sector, that building was a zero at thirty years old. And then if you look at every other building that's on that report, you know, major overhauls have gone on or, or builds have gone on.
Correct.
Well within that depreciable period. So the one, you know, jumps out at you, it's forty-eight years old. And you can maintain all you want, but if you think about it on a, on a normal depreciation schedule, um, it's, yeah, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the, the question is, is does MSBA to receive funding? That's, that's the question.
So there's funding, I mean, you know, almost for a minute, you have to put aside, I, I know we can never put aside the funding, but you have to for a second and let common sense step in and say, you have a forty-eight-year-old building and, and you've, we've done a good job maintaining it, therefore on somebody's list, they're not reading it as a, as a teardown. So, but there's a practical application here that says, you got something major, you know, brewing over there, um, that is going to need attention.
Absolutely, which is why we need to do a feasibility study to see what are all the issues that we need to address.
John, I think to John's point, you want options.
Yeah.
That's not something that has been our strong suit on the past building projects. Um, we want to know what are the different paths we might take forward and then have that discussion in the community.
Well, I think that's kind of what we're hoping for out of the building committee is options.
Right.
John, you've mentioned in the past that that building, you know, one of the deficiencies, I think, is it has something to do with the lack of an office as you walk in the front door, just like, usually a central office when you walk into a public school. I, I guess that particular facility is quite tiny or?
It's a tiny, it's a tiny area, yes.
So they've already analyzed the, you know, the nineteen sixty-nine standards, I'm guessing, were different than you would do it today. They've already built, they've already baked that into that number three, it's all, all kind of rolled into that number three. This is too small, that's not there, but that, that still gets you a three.
Yes.
Public comment, yes, why don't you come out up just, I'm sorry, Andrew.
John, I just want to get one thing clear, John, so I get it, we're not getting any state money.
No, I didn't say that, I just, you don't go higher on the list compared to other buildings. I'm just stating what MSBA, all I'm stating tonight is facts, not, not any opinions.
No, no, I, I'm just trying to, trying to.
So we would still apply, right?
Yes, we.
So what's, what's sort of, so there are these deficiencies, what sort of timeline? And you're thinking of doing a feasibility study, how long does doing these feasibility studies take? And when do you think the deficiencies would be corrected roughly, like a year, two years, three years?
I, I don't have those answers and I think, though, that's information that I think a feasibility study would tell us.
All right, thank you.
Oh, hi, I'm Jennifer Kane, I'm a Killam mom, I have two girls at Killam and then a little two-year-old boy, Hulby, at Killam. Um, and I booked up this report and I read this whole report and I downloaded all the schools into a spreadsheet and I analyzed the report. Do you know the percentage of schools in the entire state, fifteen hundred schools, the percentage that got a four, one point two percent? It was fifteen schools that got four in the entire state. Percentage that got a three, fifteen percent of schools in the entire state. We are the bottom sixteen percent of schools. And also the high school was rated a three when we got funding for the high school. Really was floored by that number and I hope you are too, we are the lowest sixteen percent. If we were hoping for a four, we were hoping for the lowest one percent. I just, I'm very upset about it and I hope that we do something before we do something about fields because to see all the numbers written out there about fields, have you seen the Killam field? But that's not even our top problem, we need help, please help us.
John, relative to the, the question rolled up in that comment, is, is there a way to, I guess, apply or otherwise, um, take the path that we did when the high school project was kicked off at a level three?
Just, just for a point of fact, the high school was under a, a different set of statutes with MSBA. MSBA has now changed.
I see, thank you.
Its whole, um, process.
So I, I guess, I mean, the question is that if, if that is true, if Killam is in the bottom sixteen percent, what, how many buildings do they fund a year and is it conceivable, and assuming that they actually go in the, in, in that order, is that one year, is that two years, is that twenty years?
Yeah, there's, um, there's a, there's an amount, in the statute, there's an amount of money that is provided each year and it, there's a, I think it's a, a percent of the state sales tax is used to fund the school building construction each year. And by statute, there's a, I think it's one percent or something like that.
That's right.
Um, so they have that pool of money each year and there's a list of schools that, and so the, until the funding dries up is, is who gets funded.
Other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lauren Dresen and, uh, quick question, so you talk about inside and outside the levy, can that be changed at the next town meeting if, if it's deemed, um, necessary? So that's the first question. And also I think I heard you talking about, um, the different factors for, um, the funding of MSBA, I think one of them is overcrowding, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But Killam is not overcrowded.
Killam has trailers outside for kindergarten students.
Portable classroom teaching school.
Right, but that, that's not deemed overcrowding by MSBA.
So why, why do we need trailers if it's not overcrowding?
We have, we have classroom space, but our classroom space is used for different things. And we do need the two modules for kindergarten, that is true.
Right.
But the space is also used for other areas like special education programs, art and music classrooms and general classrooms.
Of course, okay. Um, and then the last one is more of a statement is that even though there is mitigation for lead in the water, I think the basic, since foundations of the water should be very important consideration whether we happen to have them inside the school. Thank you.
Other comments?
Uh, we get an answer on that, inside, outside the levy?
Bob?
Um, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the Finance Committee has some guidelines of what belongs inside and the outside the levy. Generally speaking, a large building project, for instance, just doesn't fit inside the levy, it's too much money. We have a certain amount of money we can spend on debt and capital every year.
Yeah.
Twelve or fifteen years ago, Barrows and, um, Wood End were done mostly inside the levy and it killed our capital plan for years. And our equipment and some of our, you know, vehicles went into severe disrepair, causing operational issues, um, for maintenance. So FINCOM developed a policy to prevent that in the future and said, you know, if a project is X or larger, it belongs, go into the voters as a debt exclusion. It's just too large to fit inside the levy. Rules are made to be changed though, any discussion can be had.
And we have other recommendations?
Yes.
So, why don't you, why don't you stand up though, people are having trouble hearing you.
John, am I correct that the wealth of the community also comes into the SB, MSBA funding as far as?
Um, the percent, the percent reimbursement, yes, that is true.
Other comments?
But not necessarily if you go on the list or not.
School committee, not just precinct one, but school committee. So, uh, obviously this is something that, I know there's a lot of parents here about Killam, this is something that the committee has been paying a lot of attention to over the years. We were waiting, you know, for the report from the MSBA. I think the question of, you know, is the hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that the building committee now has enough for a feasibility study, we don't know because we need to really at this point get together with the building committee and talk about what the scope of the feasibility study should be. You know, perhaps their funding will allow them to assess the scope of the feasibility study. I mean, most all of you have been on town meeting for quite a while, you've voted through a, quite a few feasibility studies. I don't remember too many of them being much less than a hundred and fifty thousand. So, you know, certainly, um, you know, and, and to, to the point of the age of the building, I believe the high school was over fifty years old when by the time, over fifty years old by the time we broke ground with that. Um, and, and many people here do remember that. I, I would be surprised, maybe a three and a four are a different thing now because that was SBA and this is MSBA, but certainly, you know, the condition of that high school building, um, it hadn't been maintained. We did, we were not maintaining our buildings then. And so, um, I think that it's, that's an important note, we do realize that we need to move forward, it's going to have to be something that we figure out how to find the feasibility study. Um, just to make sure the water, there is drinkable water at Killam School in bubblers, it's bottled water, um, and that will be the condition before we, we can obviously do something in the building to rectify that. So there's drinking water accessible to students and staff.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir, come on up, just introduce yourself and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, um, Nick Marigoni, I have a student at Killam and, oh, um, Dr. Doherty, uh, the MSBA study, did that, does that consider the surrounding areas and getting students to and from the school and how they get dropped off and such?
That's part and one of the rate, that's the, I believe that was the general, that's the general environment condition, I believe. Yeah, that's the general environment, which we received a one.
Okay, 'cause I, doing it every day, I see it's a big problem and so I would encourage the study, uh, feasibility study to consider that in ways and improve that. Sometimes it can take fifteen minutes in traffic to drop a student off and that, that's really tough. Thank you.
Other public comments? Mark?
Mark, Doc's here, I'll just piggyback on Elaine's point for a moment. I think we've also learned that when we underfund and underestimate on feasibility studies, it tends to bite us at a big multiple afterward. And I just wonder what the mechanism would be if we decide in, as soon as we can, that we're going to need more money. How would that take place? Ideally, it happens before town meeting, before the budget closes, we can fit it in. But what would the process be? Does it come through the permanent building committee that the, first of all, I think the school committee will come forward with a project. Once the project's there, um, once the project's from there to figure out what it will be, how much it will cost and then how to make sure we can get it in, if that's what you're saying.
Um, I would suggest, quite honestly, that the school committee meet with the permanent building committee. They have a meeting on, I believe it's January eighth that's booked to talk about the library project. They're usually pretty good about meeting when they need to. Their next meeting scheduled would be early February. Now, that's probably in enough time with respect to the budget process, FINCOM's a meeting during the month of February, so, you know, that's a possibility.
Other comments? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi, um, Kristen Tiger, our first grade teacher at Killam. Um, I think that we've done a pretty good job, we were able to get a new roof years ago, we were able to get a new heating system years ago, um, but the lead in the water is a huge concern and although we have drinkable water in the bubblers, there's a lot of time on learning that is lost sending kids to the bubblers. Um, and I teach first grade, so there are very little in there, you know, at the beginning of the year where it was really warm, a lot of the bubblers were running out and then you're trying to get the custodians to rebuild the bubblers and sending the kids halfway across the building to another bubbler. This is just a lot of educational time being missed because of those bubblers, so I think that the lead in the water, I think, is a huge concern as a school, that that's something that we'd really like to see rectified. And I understand that's a huge undertaking and it's so much money, but if there's something to prioritize, that's something that, you know, we really would like considered.
Other public comments? Okay.
John, I have a.
Yes, Barry.
So can, can you just lay out sort of what, I'm trying to wrap my arms around the process. So the SBA process, you said, is not necessarily off the table or, so will there be a formal application that's, do they, do they request proposals at a certain time?
January, usually the first week in January that they begin their application process for two programs. One is for, for building projects and one called accelerated repair, which are the things like boilers and roofs.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go down that path, right?
Uh, that would be a decision that the school committee would need to make.
So that's not, so it's not an either or, we can go down that path, see where that goes, we can also do our own assessment and at the end of the day, we'll have options, right?
That, that is true, yes.
So it's not one or the other, it could be.
Correct.
Parallel tracks. Okay.
John, I just want to understand the feasibility, funding the feasibility project and this goes to you too, Bob, I guess, the process and the timing. So if that's to be funded for FY nineteen, um, is that to be funded for FY nineteen? And if it's to be funded for FY nineteen, how do we get it in the budget?
And if it's to be funded for FY19, how do we get it in the budget?
I can answer the beginning of that. Currently, in FY18, there is $150,000 that the Permanent Building Committee has. Proposed in FY19 and passed by November Town Meeting, for what it's worth, is another $150,000 next year. So those two things, you know, one is a fact, one is a proposal. Anything that's above and beyond that or a different timeframe would have to be a change going through town meeting.
But there's enough to get started now on some...
Absolutely. I certainly think so, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Other public comment? Yes, Michelle.
Michelle Sampee, Precinct 6. Yeah, I want to kind of make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. I understand that there's an application process that could start in January, but I also understand that we need a feasibility study and that we want to be very thoughtful with the scope of it so that we're learning from past mistakes and past successes. So my understanding is that we wouldn't be submitting an application until the School Committee met with the, the board, the...
Building Committee.
The building, thank you very much, the Building Committee. And they went through that process, and then you would determine if the funding was available. And if we didn't have the 150, if we were over that, then we would have to find out where we would get that money. So, because it kind of feels like we're jumping ahead and that there are a lot of steps. So I'm just looking for the clarification, I guess.
I think there's two different paths, which I think what Barry was alluding to. The feasibility study, if the School Committee, they met with the School Building Committee and that they felt that's a direction to go, is something that could be started sooner. The MSBA process is a much more lengthier process that could take a few years.
But it doesn't strike me, and I humbly, to make sense to start that process until we have a feasibility study.
MSBA has certain requirements before, to begin a process. That's something that we would have to study carefully when the application is out.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comment?
Deadline of this application.
April.
Seeing none?
April for...
Do they roll, John? So it's like, you know, you have to stop...
For the program that I was referring to, the deadline is in April. For the accelerated repairs, I believe the deadline is in February, but we, that would not be for what we're looking at.
So if we don't have enough information to submit an app, you know, kind of a thoughtful application, we're really waiting another year, essentially?
For MSBA?
For MSBA.
And with the MSBA, that is to be put on a list to eventually receive funding if you get the approval of the community to move forward with a renovation or a new building.
So that's a year. We're talking...
That's, yeah, that's to get, put on a list to get a percent of funding.
Yeah, so that's, that's a few-year process. Assuming it all works out, that's what, you just described a three or four-year process.
It's a multi-year process, yes.
Dan?
Bob, is there not some requirement at the Town Meeting Act in some capacity before this gets started up as an official project, started by the School Committee? They have to declare it a project?
That's a good question. I'd have to look...
Before the Building Committee can take formal action on it.
I don't think a feasibility study would require that, but anything beyond that would.
Yeah.
And I'd have to really reread the bylaw. The Building Committee also has their own policies and procedures.
Typically, got a town meeting in January for a school project.
So that may be also what we're both thinking of.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding. The feasibility study is to look at options that we have, that we might undertake on our own, but it doesn't necessarily inform us relative to the MSBA path.
Correct.
It might, but it's not designed to.
No, you're right. All right.
We may decide to do something on our own, you know, before MSBA even kicks in.
Other public comment? George?
Yeah, George Ketchen, and as you well know, yeah, I knew it this day. But it seems to me that we should determine what is the most actionable thing that we can do right now to start the process. And it seems that you said it, Bob, that it's the School Committee and the Building Committee to get together. So if there's School Committee and Building Committee people in here, I think that should be a number-one thing on their next agenda. Because it would seem to me, before you do anything, you need a feasibility study, you know what the issues are, or go further into what the issues are. But, you know, what is the most actionable item that can be done to start the process and not wait for one or two years?
Other public comment? Vanessa?
Vanessa, I have my answer many. I have three questions. One regarding PPW. I noticed that that one is inside tax levy. Is there a reason, given the school project, how large it would be, it's inside versus outside tax levy?
The biggest answer is it's further away and very complex. I'd have no idea how many towns would join, what it would cost. But I will say, even though the project may be large and comparable to Killam, it will be split, first, it will be split by communities, and secondly, within Reading, it would be split by the three enterprise funds and the general fund. So the share paid by the general fund is certainly smaller than a Killam, for instance. But that doesn't mean that that couldn't also be proposed as a debt exclusion down the road.
Regarding the feasibility study, what exactly does that entail? Is that all of the options? Would that be specific to Killam? Because $150,000 doesn't strike me as a lot, given the number of projects that I've heard discussed.
So there's different types of studies. The feasibility study would be more of a general information gathering study. This is, that's different than a design.
Right.
Study a full design of a, if you're going to move forward with a, with a building renovation or addition. So with the feasibility, we would actually set the parameters for what we would want in the feasibility study. So what are the, what are the areas that need to be looked at with Killam? What are the different options that are available to us? Do we need to look at all five elementary schools at the same time? Is, is part of a, you know, a multi-school solution? Those are all the things that I would, I would assume would be something we would want to look at. And then we would have all the information to make a decision that would be the best for the community.
Thank you. And my last question is, when and how are we going to be discussing of all of these items that are mentioned, what the priority is? Because we have the athletic fields, we have the building security, and we have Killam, but what we haven't talked about is the time, and we know that they need to happen within 10 years, but what we haven't talked about is which affects the residents the most and in what order we want to do them in. So I'm curious when that discussion is going to happen.
I can start answering the question. The athletic field improvements were put into the capital plan last November with an expectation of when they were needed. So the fields were in certain conditions. They were needed to be repaired within two years. As I mentioned earlier, that's now been extended to three or four years. Killam, we had no idea. No idea what MSBA would say and where the path may lead. And then the building security improvements, you know, you can do them tomorrow, you can never do them, that's a community choice. I would assume that that's a series of community meetings ending up with town meeting making a decision. The soonest any of these are, currently is two years away, and I'm suggesting that those ones can even be pushed out to three or four. So honestly, I would say any of these are on the table for the first priority. It's a community decision. I assume that the School Committee, the Selectmen, and the FinCom in a financial forum would have that discussion, and ultimately, town meeting would decide on funding. And possibly the voters.
Thank you.
Other public comment? John, Bob, any other comments?
Not on this. Just to finish off the shared costs, benefits are also not changed since the financial forum. I did share with the Selectmen some good news on health insurance that's probably more of a long-term thing. Our PEC, our collection of town, school, and light department unions, did vote to make a very aggressive change on retirees, on certain retirees, which will get them into Medicare sooner than they otherwise would have. The town will pick up a share of that cost and save hundreds of thousands of dollars down the road annually. The other thing is that our experience, if you will, our, our healthiness is actually at an all-time high. I'm sure I'll regret saying that, but for the first time in the Maya Pool, we're one of the most healthy groups. I'm quite sure I'll regret that, but that's not always been the case. We tend to be an older workforce. All public sector is older than private sector, but Reading in particular has tended to be an older workforce than other municipalities over the years. So again, that's, that's the biggest driver of the operating budget problem, is our benefits. Seven and a half percent at this point for health insurance is still a wild guess. All we know is when Maya announces a range in the fourth week of January, we should be towards the low end. National trends, we were told as of a month and a half ago, were double digits. Who knows? I can't solve that, I just don't know.
Bob, just to go back to that slide, I think it's important to point out that the pool of health life insurance increase from FY17 to FY18 went up almost 4.5%. And Prop 2.5 only allows us to grow our income at about 2.5% plus some new growth. So I just wanted to highlight that line.
Yeah, over a long period of time, our health insurance compared to private health insurance annually has behaved exceptionally well, by way more than 2.5%. So we might be at a long-term average of about 4 when the country's at 8 or 9. We can't do better than that. We won't in the future do as well as that. But to your point, even a 4 is bad news for municipality. We do have some of our, my colleagues that are getting double digits and have for the last few years, and they're being crushed. This is a municipality not too much unlike us, it is a city. They spend almost 20% of their budget on health insurance, we're closer to 10. So just think about that math.
And Bob, I think it's important, you've mentioned this to the, to the Selectmen many times, and I know with FinCom, but I think it's helpful to point out to folks in the room and on, and on who are watching, that what Reading contributes toward its employees' health insurance, how that compares to the...
Employees.
To its employees.
Employees contribute.
And what the employees contribute. I think that there may be some sort of folks out there thinking that we're sort of overly generous with our benefits. And I know you've mentioned it to us many times, I think it's worth repeating kind of how we stand relative to the private sector in general.
The employees, generally speaking, don't think we're overly generous. The town pays 71% of the premiums, the employees or the retirees pay 29%. Averages within our peer communities is starting to approach 75-25, but historically has been 80-20 or worse. There are still some communities that are 90-10. The other part I didn't mention, but I will now, is our PEC, which is, again, the collection of all the school, town, and light department unions, has been a really good partner. You know, again, they're a 29% partner, we're a 71, our objectives are the same. They have made significant plan designs. That 4% did not happen by accident.
Right.
We have shifted many costs under the consumer of health insurance within our employment base.
With their permission.
And another thing worth mentioning, a few years ago, we had one of these budget meetings at the Light Department, and I remember we went into a lot more detail on HR and things, some things like this than usual. Just so people are clear on pensions, all employees hired within the last 10 or 15 years fully fund their own pensions. We have between 9 and 11% of our salary taken out to fund the pension. The reason that there are some unfunded liabilities is for things that happened 25 and 30 years ago. This, actually, the Retirement Board just met today. I believe the pension fund will be fully funded somewhere around $20,000 in '29 or '28. At that point, this number for retirement will drop off by over $1 million. And that's just the catch-up for when towns paid 100% of pensions and employees did not pay anything. And you do that for a number of decades, and it's really expensive in the future as long as they're alive. We are in significantly better shape going forward for the pension. As we've discussed with FinCom, our OPEB, which is Health Insurance for Retirement, needs more funding. You know, contributing $500,000 a year is much better than most communities. We should be contributing $1,300,000 in order to defuse that liability over a long period.
How big is that liability, about?
Last I heard, it was about $80 million. Is that ballpark?
Probably up there. When you had last come in, the evaluation was somewhere near $70 million. It's worse now because they don't give you the right discount rate if you're not funding to the annual required foundation.
So the thinking and the planning has been, for a long time, as soon as the need to fund pensions at that high level goes away, we can shift that funding over into OPEB. Ideally, you'd like to do it sooner, but obviously, we can't afford to do that.
And the government has sort of moved that liability to the balance sheet, where it used to be off book, and so...
Right.
Kind of as a way to kind of hit you over the head to remind yourself that you need to...
Yes.
Put this in, and also the rating agencies look at, look at that.
Correct.
So we've maintained a AAA VON rating, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Because we've sort of done the right thing, but even by doing the right thing, we're still a little behind.
Yeah, and our light department, our water sewer, and stormwater enterprises are fully funding their OPEB liability. It's just the general fund just frankly can't afford it. Lastly, in terms of a lot of miscellaneous costs, the only change John and I discovered a week or two ago, there's extra students at Essex North that neither one of us knew about. We'll have to increase the budget for FY19. The budget for FY18 at $38,000 is half of what we need. We may have surplus in the other two Voc school lines to absorb that. If we don't, we'll be going to April Town Meeting. But it's interesting that we don't know how many students we have at a school because they can't count, or they don't tell us. The primary school in Wakefield does a one-year lag, so they know. We know at the end of a school year that next year will be X because it's a fact. The others depend on enrollment during the year, which they don't know until about December. They just don't happen at...
So they've just got approval for a new building?
Correct.
What will that cost us?
That's a really good question. MSBA is reimbursing some large share. I think Chelsea, they do it by the community that has the highest reimbursement rate, I think. That's what it used to be. Chelsea has the highest reimbursement rate as of a few years ago, somewhere in the mid 70s.
Oh.
Yeah, so the rest of the 12 communities are going to have to pay, let's say, 25% of a new building, which I'm sure is $100 million plus. And that will be divided up by enrollment, which is a great benefit for Reading. So I made sure of that last summer when they talked about it. It will cost us money, it'll have to come into the capital plan somewhere. I really don't have a good number for you, but it's not a showstopper. It's, it's a minor inconvenience, if you will.
Well, I mean, in a relative way, it's a lot of money, but it's a small percentage.
Yeah.
Because the forecast I saw was that it'll be a $200 billion building.
Really? Okay.
How does it come into the capital plan? Is debt, Bob? You just pay it over time?
That's a really good question. I don't know. Do you know, John?
I don't know.
How can the government take money over time?
I'm guessing it'll be part of our assessment that you see in this line. It'll just be capital in addition to operations. That's a guess.
But of course, we're going, that would go, that would be a capital expense, and we'd do that...
It'll be off the top as an accommodated cost, whatever, whatever it is. But for those that want to see what a MSBA priority school is, go visit the Voc School in Wakefield, and you get your answer. The kids have kept that building together for at least 10 years.
Yeah, or longer.
I've seen your project.
So, yes.
Bob, I'm sorry, the, so the survey comments are looming large in my cortex right now, and the phrase "live within your means" was repeated many times, more than I can count. But my point is, or my question is this, for the health insurance costs, is it fair to say that we're giving our employees, both keep munis and teachers, some salary increases steps and cost of living? But on the health benefit side, that's not a full, like, 3% raise, say. They're gonna, they have to pay more out in medical care costs. Is that correct?
Yeah, if, I haven't done this math lately, but for many years, the salary increases perceived by most employees did not pay for the increase in their health insurance costs. So they get 29% of whatever the increase is, passed along directly to them as a monthly cost. Their raise may or may not have covered that, frankly.
So it's hurt, as a, as a town, it hurts us, but there are also...
Both the town and employer are highly motivated to minimize that cost, yes.
Get to the gym. Okay, thanks.
Any other public comment? We're coming here to the end of the evening, so this is an opportunity to ask any questions that might have lingered.
Okay, that's all we have for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, before we go, Caitlin sent out a packet for tomorrow. There is a settlement in there you should take a look at, if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet. if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet. Just want to remind everyone.
Thank you.
And just let me say a few words about it, so it's clear. This is money that a trucking company is agreeing to pay the fire department or to pay Reading. There was an oil spill or a spill up on 128. The fire department incurred some costs. There is case law and state law that says the truck company could pay. They have lawyers. We have lawyers.
Yep.
We're settling for a partial payment, but a pretty good settlement.
How old is that event?
It's within the last six months, I think, as Paul's still aware. When did it happen? Last winter? Oh, it's getting older. Okay.
So this is money we're getting?
This is reimbursement.
Well, we're gonna talk about it tomorrow, just to heads up.
And also in your packet, you receive the enterprise fund budgets, much like you receive the general fund budget in the past. Jeff will go over those.
Motion to adjourn, hang on.
For those at home, and echo the comments of my colleague at the end of the table, one of the comments in our board of selectmen survey was regarding the communication style, the communication level, and the context for town budgets. Tonight is the third in four meetings that will discuss town budgets, the components within them. They anticipated growth in those numbers as we roll up to include both our budget discussion as well as a potential ballot question. I'd urge you, if you have any questions, to make a point of attending tomorrow night's meeting or getting your question sent in through a proxy. We're very interested in hearing what you have to say. We're very, we're preparing this material for the public's consumption, both so they understand and that they have a basis to make a decision on any future questions that come forward. So with that, I'm sorry, Bob.
Just to clarify also what is and what is not going to happen tomorrow night. Jeff Zager will describe DPW's budget request, both in the general fund and all the enterprise fund. And I have some concluding remarks about the process going forward. The board and the community will not see a balanced budget tomorrow night on purpose. The superintendent and I have discussed the process. We both believe the best answer, I'm sorry, he's not here to agree, but trust me, is to us both release a balanced budget in the first week of January. That's what he's going to do to the school committee. That's what I'll do to the community. And then, in some way, shape, or form, we'll indicate what did not make the budget and what are our priorities to add back, should revenue become available.
Bob, so tomorrow night will be the, you know, the sort of fourth of four, you know, on the municipal side. I know I've just gained an incredible amount of knowledge of how the town operates and some of the risks that are actually, we've been taking by not funding certain things over a period of time. Is tomorrow night at the end of that an appropriate time for the five of us to kind of talk about what we learned, some of the things we would like to kind of see that goes into that, or are you, are you seeking input from us? I would hope that-
I guess I better answer that. You know, your input's always welcome. I've specifically carved out time on your January 9th agenda to have this discussion. I didn't know how prepared you'd be tomorrow. We can start it tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, tonight I just learned a ton of stuff I didn't know, so.
Less than a year.
Your balance budget-
They have my attention.
You're proposing to give a balanced budget after January 9th?
No, before January 9th. You'll see it in time for the January night. And you'll see the list of, if you will, what didn't make the cut.
And at that point, our comments could-
I think it might be valuable if tomorrow night you spend a little time, I'm just reflecting on the process this year and what you learned. I will tell you, I've learned some things. If I had a balanced budget a week and a half ago, it's not the same as what it will be when I ultimately do it.
Well, I'm glad you learned stuff, because I don't feel like I'm the only one that's sort of on the curfew.
As you probably learned, our department has, are very shy about asking for more money.
Yes.
And by forcing this discussion, if you will, they are forced to discuss the things they don't get and why. And I learned things, because they don't always have the same, you know, thorough discussion, honestly, with us in private.
It's a very, very valuable process. I mean, basically, what we've done is we've lifted the hood.
Yeah.
And people can poke around and see what's under the hood. That's always valid.
Well, it'll also come back in the discussion on priorities that will occur in January. So this will help be the foundation for that discussion as well.
Well, I guess, off to Barry's point, do we, do we want to tomorrow night discuss priorities for Bob moving forward towards a balanced budget, or do we want to do it other way around?
I expect the town manager will prepare a list of priorities for consideration. We could choose to do whatever we want with it. But I would expect that would be presented to us tomorrow night's probably a little too soon, but I would think in January.
Right.
And, you know, in the past, that's what we've done. Bob brings something, and then, you know, we consult with him based on that, and that has changed. So for example, you know, one of the examples of that is of the economic development director was not in the mix of one of your budgets, and, you know, after, after council back and forth, it went in. So, I mean, I think it's, I think it's easier to get a look at it from Bob's perspective, and then we'll have time once he, I'm assuming you're not, you're going to give that to us days in advance of the night meeting.
Thursday before the night.
Right, so, I mean, so we'll have three, four days to be able to look at it, and then-
And that'll have the narrative that you're-
Yeah, and we can engage in conversation.
Or no.
Probably not.
That's a lot of work. Try to do that tomorrow night. I think you're, I think you're not aiming.
What would be helpful for tomorrow night, I'll lay out some sort of guiding principles that I'm using. It would be helpful if you'd comment on those and either disagree or agree or add some things. That'd be most welcome. As opposed to discussing certain line items, which might not be as valuable.
No, that wasn't my intent, Bob.
Okay. Approach.
Yeah, general approach.
Okay.
Much, much prefer to have you be the bad guy.
It's my job.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Barry, Barry motions. Mr. Halsey seconds. All those in favor? Five zero, we are out. Good evening, everybody. Drive safe.